Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call this to order. This is the City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 4th, 2018. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Christie Malchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Councilmember Tom Hornish.
Present.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Present.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pam Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Romero Valderrama.
Okay, we do have a quorum present. Councilmember Ross, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, by a vote of six-zero, the agenda is approved. Next, we will have public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit per person or five minutes if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 p.m. at the end of business day to our City Clerk, Melanie Anderson, at manderson@smamish.us. Please be aware, council meetings are videotaped and are available to the public. First, I have Jane Garrison.
Hello, Council. I'm Jane Garrison, 24409 Southeast 20th Place, Smamish. Last night, Eric Brooks and I had the privilege of presenting thoughts on incremental future growth in neighborhoods. We appreciated your interest and your questions, but when I got home, one comment stood out in my mind. It was that Smamish is a bedroom city. And I cringed at the thought. I actually cringed. And I -- it should be so much more. Are we really just an expensive place to sleep? I get that the words "bedroom city" sound safe, even comforting, in the hostility of the physical, digital, and political environments today. It's scary out there. I have to admit that some days I feel lucky just to get back home safe and sound. I think we need to rise above those fears and lead the way. One-purpose towns are passe. Bedroom cities were originally built out of fear. They do not meet the ideals, goals, trends, and the needs of the current population. They fly in the face of climate change. A bedroom city just doesn't get us there. With the population forecasts and our position on the plateau, and our position is an ideal place for growth environmentally, we're east of Seattle. We're next door to Redmond. No pressure there. With two light rail stations targeted at our north and south extremities, we should be at the forefront of progressive thinking. We can't be afraid. We see that pressure. I understand that pressure. But we know you are up to the task. That's why we hired you. Lead the way.
Thank you. Next, I have Sid Gupta, followed by Bill Way.
Hi, Sid Gupta, 4309 243rd Avenue Southeast. I am on the city's Parks Commission, but I'm here tonight speaking as an individual, not as a representative of the commission. I'm going to be talking about open space preservation, contiguous canopy cover, and trails. Open space, I think, is a pretty simple one, so I'll start there. Through the Pro Plan process and as development pressure continues to affect Smamish, we've heard how much our community values our green space. Per the community survey in the Pro Plan, buying land for future use, including open space preservation, was the highest priority for our park system. Trails and open space preservation were priorities one and two, respectively, for a focus on land acquisition. By and large, we as a community seem to agree that we'd like to continue to preserve open space where and whenever possible on the plateau. As we've heard through the development of the Urban Forest Management Plan, if we have more contiguous canopy cover, we have fewer edges and more protected treat areas with less wind damage, less drought damage, and consequently, less disease in our tree populations. Large open space areas also give us a place to plant replacement trees to mitigate for development. Small, spotty growth areas require more water and maintenance, plus allow for sun on the forest floor, ideal places for noxious weed growth. Trees in the open or in small groups don't have the life expectancy of trees in a larger forest. But as we all know, these opportunities are limited. Acquisitions like the Beeden Hill property and the Big Rock Park parcels aren't going to come up as often as we all might like. It's therefore incumbent that we begin to prioritize green space connections. By linking our existing green areas, we can increase our canopy cover, enhance the overall health of our canopy by combating forest fragmentation, restore critical wildlife corridors, and improve walkability by creating natural trail connections between neighborhoods, parks, and things like restaurants, stores, and access to public transit. We saw a great map of what this could look like in Jane and Eric's presentation last night. As some of you might know, I get around mostly on foot in Smamish. After years of shuffling around every which way in the city, I can tell you that sometimes it can be a real challenge to be pedestrian in Smamish. Trails and sidewalk connections can be inconsistent. Some streets, like Southeast 8, barely even have a shoulder to walk on. Going back to the Pro Plan, one of the metrics used for level of service was the distance from neighborhoods to parks with a specific eye on what people considered walkable distances. In the case of Southeast 8, living close to Big Rock Park Site A may not mean much if you have to walk on the painted line or in the ditch to get there. Smamish currently scores a 12 out of 100 in walkability on walkscore.com. We are a car-dependent city. For some comparison, Iskua's at 30, Redmond's at 32, and Bellevue's at 40. As we continue to develop our park system and our city, I believe we should not only keep in mind, but put real, meaningful emphasis on making sure we can get where we want to go in Smamish, both on foot and on bike, safely and efficiently. In addition to making our city more desirable, more trails might even help us get a few cars off our roads. None of this is easy. As we all know, creating a new trail is rarely a simple process. And as Jane noted last night, things might get worse before they get better. As our city continues to mature, however, it's important that we establish and maintain a vision of what we'd like Smamish to look like five, 20, and 50 years in the future. If we know where we want to end up, we can prioritize and allocate our resources accordingly. I think green space connections and trail corridors are a natural, necessary part of the visioning outlined by Jane and Eric. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Nope.
You --
Nope.
It's on?
Yes.
Oh. My name is Bill Way. I live at 3451 East Lake Smamish Shore Lane, Northeast on Weber Point. I wanted to comment today on Jane Garrison and Eric Brooks' visioning from last night with the comp plan. I've lived on Lake Smamish for 62 years, and a lot of that led to what I ended up doing with an environmental consulting firm that I created, The Watershed Company, that I retired from, that I ran for 34 years. I spent a little time coaching Jane and Eric on environmental connections, which they in turn assimilated. There's huge benefits to incorporating Jane and Eric's ideas. Not only is their sense of community and walkability served, but large environmental benefits are provided at a fraction of the cost of the city. For example, wide and stream wetland lake buffers could also serve as city parks, trail linkages, as well as inline and offline regional detention and stormwater bypass lines that are managed by the Public Works Department. Redevelopment in such places in the city of Redmond has resulted in huge wins for Tosh and Idlewood Creeks by obtaining, developing new city park land, with, say, a large stormwater detention pond and a park. This is exponentially better than scores of existing site-by-site tot lots and spot detention units that were developed in the private sector. So what I'm alluding to is a suggestion that if this was well-managed, you could end up basically win-win across the board, including for the streams and the wetlands and the lakes. Walkability and neighborhood connectedness is already on upswing in Smamish. We bicycled to our -- my wife and I bicycled to our athletic club, Whole Foods, and Fred Meyer on the East Lake Smamish Trail. Once isolated, we have gotten to know our neighbors along the lake and have potlucks, trying to avoid the trail bowlers when bicycling home in the dark. Another benefit, if you read between the lines there, was it keeps inebriated people off the roads, trails do. Our neighbors, once opposed to the trail, use it regularly. Jane and Eric have provided a creative and thoughtful, comprehensive planned vision. When other cities report water quality and flooding disasters, loss of all salmon, folks leaving town due to lack of neighborhood identity, walkability, and housing options, and angst over traffic gridlock, you can say smugly, "Not us," at least not anymore. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Nope. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Next, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, by a vote of six-zero, the consent calendar passed. Next on our agenda, we have a pair of public hearings. However, I wonder if the council would be willing to entertain an executive session prior to that for a discussion of litigation, which would be our seat up at 42.101i.
I'd be open to that.
Okay, very good. So maybe 15 minutes? So we'll be back in about 15 minutes. Uh-oh.
Huh? Yeah. Yeah, I know, it's not that one. I had to move my mom. So she's, yeah, for assisted living, so.
Is she okay?
Um, you know.
I've done that. I mean, we all, we hope they play.
Okay, thank you for bearing with us. We have a continuation, oh no, this is the, our first public hearing actually is the 2019 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a public hearing and we're looking for the approval of a resolution which will be the first step in the Comprehensive Plan Amendment process by identifying the proposals for the docket which will move for legislative review next year. We talked with you in a study session last evening. There's three items that are proposed and I'm going to turn that to Mr. Thomas to explain those to you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, City Council. The three proposals for the 2019 docket are on the screen in front of you and up on the big screen for the audience here this evening. As we reviewed those last night and answered your questions, I'll go through these super quickly and then turn it back over to the mayor to open the public hearing. The first proposal is related to the Urban Forest Management Plan, integrating that in amending our policies in our comp plan next year once the actual plan presumably is adopted by city council. The second proposal was from a private citizen looking to add an errata sheet to our comprehensive plan as we discussed last night. Our code, Title 24, does not currently permit such, but the Planning Commission has recommended that the three examples that were provided in the proposal be transformed to text amendments that would be considered through the legislative process next year. Staff is supportive of that amended recommendation from the Planning Commission. That's before you on that one this evening. And the third one, which we spent most of our time last evening discussing, relates to the town center and going back and taking a look at existing policies in our comprehensive plan and town center subarea plan related to specific quality of life areas. There were five of them that staff initially put forward to the Planning Commission with a sense of open-endedness if we found other things. The Planning Commission in reviewing that and conducting their own public hearing recommends to the council a total of six specific quality of life areas and closing that open-endedness on that docket request. So that is the recommendations that's been put before you for consideration this evening. Staff can certainly support that recommendation from the Planning Commission as we discussed last night. Going into those six specific subject matter areas certainly provides us enough work to do next year on this matter and we can go with that. So unless you have any questions at this moment, I'll, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you and we'll get going with the public hearing.
I don't see any questions from council, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I have Mary Victor. And if there's anyone else that would like to address the council on the docket, you may line up behind Mary there.
Hello, my name's Mary Victor. I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammish and I submitted the proposal too. I actually submitted the items a couple of years ago as a map change, which council wanted to do, but they didn't realize it had to be a docket item and they didn't take any of the dockets from the citizens that year. Then the next year I sort of missed the deadline, but I came up with the idea for the errata sheet, like, hey, if you can't make the changes, let's at least make a list of changes or things to do so people reading can know that there are changes. And then when I submitted, this year I submitted as errata with the changes and then the code apparently won't let an errata sheet be suggested by me, but it could be by the city. And the Planning Commission talked about this a lot and they said, well, we really think the changes should be able to be made. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about what those are. I did pass out maps to you, but I think it's easiest if you just watch here while I talk. This is steep slopes, wetlands, and parks map, which is in the comp plan, but it doesn't have a legend, it just has nice colors. So we did a bunch of research with city staff supporting and we found out the legend and where this map and the data sources came from, so I'd like to have that added because think the changes should be able to be made. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about what those are. I did pass out maps to you, but I think it's easiest if you just watch here while I talk. This is Steep Slopes Wetlands and Parks Map, which is in the comp plan, but it doesn't have a legend, it just has nice colors. So we did a bunch of research with city staff supporting and we found out the legend and where this map and the data sources came from, so I'd like to have that added because other parts of the comp plan talk about the natural environment and existing condition, the natural features of city of Sammish influence land use. For instance, deep slopes and wetlands limit development potential, but if you have a map that doesn't really, that you don't know what it is, it's not good. So I would like to have that changed made. That was the first one. And then the second one, because as you know, I study stormwater a lot, is it actually has the overlay of the utility district areas of Sammish Plateau Water and Northeast Sammish Sewer and Water District. Northeast Sewer and Water is the green, and it's like Sammish, or excuse me, Sammish Plateau Water is the blue areas. And in the map that's in the comp plan, the blue kind of got messed up and it's just not there, it just doesn't show up. And the reason that he's important is they actually overlap in the city in this area just above Inglewood, so you can have water and sewer. Growth follows sewers, so you need to know where those are and it's important that you understand where the utility extents are, so that map I think should also be corrected. I believe they already have it, it just needs to be put up. And then the third thing is, is the original comp plan was in 2003. Every seven years they're supposed to do an update.
Yes, so I'm sorry, where are they in the process now?
He's using my time. So 2003 was the first comp plan. There was no update done in 2010. In fact, the next comp plan wasn't even looked at until 2012. It took three years to get done, so it's 2015. And then they really haven't had any changes, so it's very hard to get changes. So there really is a problem with getting a process for having changes and maybe an errata sheet can be done eventually or when the next rev is, but these changes really should be made because they're maps and they're things that you can use and make decisions on. Because the comp plan is the guiding light that you follow and then it has the goals and it needs to have the information so that you can make decisions for those. And you're going to have a lot of new people from the Parks Commission and from the Planning Commission, you're going to do a lot of changes to the comp plan through the other things this year. People are going to be reading it and it's just, if you have errors, you need to have hints or information so people can know that these changes, like there's one that Trails, Bike Ways and Paths Plan, that's been renamed the Non-Motorized Plan, but it doesn't say that in the comp plan because it was written and then they made the change, which is a good thing, but there's no way to actually indicate that to anybody. So that was the third one that was suggested to be changed. So they're actually small changes, I believe a lot of the work has already been done. And if you could put it through as a docket, then this could be helpful to people to use, not waste time, not confuse people and things you can make decisions from. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Okay.
Are we good? Ramara, you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm going to put you on mute and I'll text you when I want to speak.
I don't have a phone, so you can't text me. You can text the City Manager.
All right.
Or Melanie.
The City Manager. All right, take care.
Councilmember Hornish.
I would move to adopt the resolution as drafted in our PAC related to setting the 2019 Comp Plan Amendment Docket.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
By a vote of seven zero, the docket has passed. We'll move on to our next item. We have another public hearing. This one is authorizing use of condemnation for a trail connection between the Lower Commons to Big Rock Park. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, before turning this to Ms. Fesser, I just want to give you a brief introduction. This is an identified trail corridor that will link Sammish Commons to Big Rock Park and it creates a key non-motorized loop connecting neighboring residential areas and Sammish Commons and the Town Center. We did send to the council on Monday a list of five options that were considered. This was determined to be the best option. We're looking for a 20-foot easement that would create a 5-foot trail. This runs between two pieces of property. One is Track A, which of the Lancaster Ridge, which we purchased back in February, and this is Track C, which is common area owned by the Balmoral.
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood, yeah. It's not a association. That is nine particular owners and we have been in communication with those. We do not have consensus on that issue at the present time. Angie, I don't know if you have some more you want to add to that, but.
I do not at this time, thank you.
Okay, very good. Then I will go ahead and continue the public hearing. So first I have James Jordan.
I've got Kara underneath you, but it doesn't matter, you're the only two that have signed up, so.
I will, uh.
Okay.
Kara, go first.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Kara Hobbs. I live at 640-222nd Place Southeast in Sammish. The city has proposed the taking of private property that is owned by the Balmoral community consisting of nine homes. In order for the city to take our property without a court order, per our CCNRs, it must be approved by all residents. The city does not have the consent of all residents. This property borders five of the nine homes in this community whereby in essence it's our backyards. The property is not merely open space, it is truly our backyard. And even if you have the path, you still have to cross a major street to get on, to get into the park, which is not a continuous path. The taking of an individual's private property is a serious offense and it goes against the fundamental rights under the Constitution of not only Washington State, but the United States Constitution. In order for the city to claim condemnation, clear and convincing evidence must be shown that the taking of private property is for public use and must be necessary, or this private property will not be granted to the city. Necessity is not defined as a mere convenience, nor is it a mere shortcut. Necessity requires that there are no other viable options. In this case, the city has used taxpayers' money to invest in $12 million improvement on Southeast Fourth, where we have lighted pedestrian walk pathways, a bike path, and it can easily connect these two parks as well as Town Center, which seems to be what the city is really requiring. In addition to that, it can also connect the new park that the city just purchased across the street from the park from Big Rock. Clearly, the taking of this property is not necessity and would be huge waste of taxpayers' dollars. In addition to this legal issue, the privacy issue for us, the individuals that are being affected, there are no amount of fences or trees that can provide property or privacy to our properties as these homes are substantially higher than the proposed path and allow individuals to peer into our homes and our backyards. Property value, the city has proposed $6,000 to the members of the community, including individuals who are not even affected by the taking. The only thing that they're affected by is merely benefiting by the $6,000. Receiving $6,000 will no way compensate for the violation of the quiet use and enjoyment of our property. It's a fundamental right of the property owner. We purchase these properties particularly for the privacy and it is this privacy that retains our property value, the safety. The police can barely keep the individuals out of the park at night. How are they going to be able to keep the individuals from entering these paths and our backyards in the evening? Protected wetlands, which are, these are protected wetlands. Major water and flooding issues, I'm hoping that the city has already addressed this. The trail is 20 feet wide, clearly not a walking path. Population with the proposed construction of Town Center, the number of people that will be in our backyards will definitely violate our quiet use and enjoyment of our property. And finally, legal fees. We plan to fight this all the way respectfully to the Supreme Court. If the court decides to move forward and attempt to take our property, the legal fees that the city will have to pay will be pale in comparison to the $40,000 that they already paid Lancaster, which was, they were also opposed to signing this, but had to for their own purposes. In sum, the taking of our private property is a serious offense and is protected under both the state and the United States Constitution. And we're hoping that the.
I do need you to wrap up, Ms. Hobbs, thank you.
That the City Council will put their efforts into constructing Fourth, Southeast Fourth, to connect these parks as well as Town Center and not violate fundamental rights of property owners. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
Before you push the button on my time, I just wanted, I've been authorized to speak for two other families, Cindy Kenner and Sandeep Misra. I also want procedurally to ask, Mr. Hornish, thank you very much for acknowledging a receipt of what I sent with Kara yesterday. Did anybody else get that and have a chance to read it? Because I don't want to go back over what I already wrote, give all the chance to review it. The other thing is, Sandeep and Cindy also submitted packages to the council. I'm hoping those have been entered into the record. That was done about, maybe a month ago or so? Two weeks ago, so. Other procedural issue is there were some incorrect representations made in your.
Mr. Jordan, can I ask you to step to the microphone?
Sure.
Nothing, and I think we do need to start your time, so.
All right, so I'm assuming that I have additional time because.
You do not, I don't.
All right. There are represent, misrepresentations in the record, which I'll get to if I'm allowed a little bit additional time. In sum, the taking of private property is a very serious matter. For 250 years, the Constitution of the United States and the great state of Washington have protected property rights with a very specific directive to any government that wishes to take our private property. And that is, is your desire, in this case for a trail that connects two parks, is your desire for convenience? Is your desire for something that would be kind of neat? Is your desire for something that might make things more beautiful? Is that enough to violate the constitutionally protected private property rights of individuals who have told you since 2013 that we have been against this idea because it violates our property rights? I have lived out there for 30 years and to echo what Kara said, it was for a reason. It's private. Take a look right up there. It's a swamp. Interestingly, the city forced upon us, tried to force upon us, a condemnation avoiding procedure by which we would have just given the right to that property to the city. But the city also said in that document, we remain responsible for maintenance, we have to indemnify the city if a tree falls on somebody and hurts them. Clearly, there is an agenda here beyond taking individual rights, which are sacred in this country, into account. Unfortunately, the Parks Department has already sunk $40,000 into the Lancaster Ridge settlement, which was foolish and probably malpractice by attorneys on not making contingent with our agreement. They have spent thousands and thousands of dollars on consultants when in the record, as of 2013, 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017, and 2018, at each point in time I was contacted that I said, we are not going to agree. Why spend any money? At no time has it been anything other than clear that our individual property rights are more important. And there is a viable alternative shown right there on that map. Whoever put it up did me a favor. I have walked from the Lower Commons parking lot to the Big Rock parking lot. It is approximately seven tenths of a mile. And that walking is on $20 million of taxpayer money to build Southeast Fourth and 218th. There will be sidewalks, there will be bike paths. There is a viable alternative at no cost. Is your interest, desire, wish for a connector that might save somebody a couple of steps worth fighting individual property rights protected by the Constitution? Believe me, I echo Kara. I'm an attorney, she's an attorney, we've made it clear since the beginning. We will not give in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on this? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it back over to the council for any questions. Okay, Councilmember Hornish.
I've got a question that was just raised. And can you explain the identification agreement for personal liability, people on the trail? Or can maybe Legal do that?
Want to turn that over to Legal? Yeah. Personal, can you explain to what you mean?
If somebody's injured on the trail, who bears the liability?
I mean, there's an entire, you know, body of law about injuries on a public recreation facility, and so all that would come into play because it would be the city easement. We would have to maintain it in a reasonable manner, those sorts of things.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, city liability.
Councilmember Ross.
Well, I guess I'm a little confused because I did speak with some of the representatives from the homeowners and they did indicate it was the homeowners responsible for the maintenance and liability of the trail. So which is it? I'm just trying to follow up on Councilmember Hornish's question.
Right, if it's a, it's a city facility in conjunction with the easement, the city maintains and has recreational immunity on the facility because it's at that point in time a city-owned facility. So we would not require homeowners to maintain or have indemnity on, on the facility, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, go ahead, Ramara.
Yeah, Kim, on the East Coast, and I'm wondering if this might help in the clarification, the East Coast, we obviously have snow and there are sidewalks. And while the right of ways of the city, we are required to clean our sidewalks and have that responsibility if something happens. Is that akin to what we have, the situation here?
A sidewalk versus the recreational facility of a trail, you have, you have that distinct difference of this would be a recreational facility owned by the city, so no.
No, I understand, I'm talking about the, the maintenance of that sidewalk during snowstorm or.
City would be on, city would be maintaining this trail, not the owners.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any more questions, but I think the council has asked a few additional questions that we would like staff to circle back with us on. So I don't know that we're going to make a decision here this evening, even though we've closed the public hearing. But Councilmember Hornish, do you?
I would like to move that we take, postpone this for some indefinite period as we continue to get a little more information.
Yeah.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seeing.
Can we, I don't know if this needs to be part of the motion, but can we, can we ask for a bit of a timetable from staff so that this doesn't just linger on forever, that we can request an update at some point in time or something like that?
We can bring back something to you first quarter next year.
Great.
March 3rd.
By March 30.
March 3rd.
30.
30? 30. Okay, yeah, by March 30. Okay, that'd be great.
Let me clarify too. I think the question Mr. Jordan was asking in regards to liability, I think Kim definitely covered the maintenance side of that. I think he was asking if someone is walking the trail and a tree that is on private property falls and injures someone, who is liable in that situation? And I think in that case, if again, that hasn't been maintained, that probably falls with the property owner, I think is, is the question that he was asking, but that's helpful.
Is that what you were asking?
Mr. Jordan, I'm sorry. I, I understand, but we have to kind of maintain our order up here. Okay, so I think we have a motion, it's been moved and seconded, that we are going to delay a decision on this until we get some more information from the city. There was an amendment, I don't know if it's been seconded, but.
Second the amendment.
Okay, so we now have an amendment to have an update, whatever that update may be, by March 30th of 2019. So all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
By a vote of seven zero, the amendment passes. Now, the main motion is now that we are going to delay this and then we will get the update by March 30th of 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of seven zero, we'll be delaying this and get an update by March 30th of 2019. Okay, our next order of business is an ordinance repealing the six-month moratorium. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is an ordinance that will repeal your moratorium. As a little history to this, the cause of concerns on traffic concurrency, the city first entered into a development moratorium on October 3rd of 2017. On March the 6th of 2018, that was extended, extended the moratorium from beginning April 3rd for an additional six months. Again, in September, an additional six months from that expiration date of October 3rd, there was an extension. Over the last couple of months, you have granted several exemptions to the moratorium. You have entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Town Center and you have completed your work on the concurrency model. So you have an ordinance this evening that will lift the remaining portions of the moratorium. And I'll turn it back to the council for any questions or.
I see no questions, but I entertain a motion.
Move to vote.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of seven zero, the moratorium has been repealed. We are at a pretty good clip here this evening. Okay, so under council reports, the feedback that I need from you is relative to SCA's assessments to the city and their budget for 2019. Does anyone have any issues with that? There's links in there to it. Our 2019 assessment looks like it's $41,586. Any questions? Okay, so you all are okay with me voting in favor of their budget and their assessment? Yes? Okay, very good. That's all I had there. Okay. Mr. City Manager, did you have anything in your report that you need from us?
I do. I have one item.
There's another report.
There's at least one other report.
Oh, sorry, I don't have her report on there. Do you have, oh, I don't have the updated thing. Do you have an action? Do you need action from the city?
I don't need any action, but I would like to...
Okay.
I've been asked, so I attended the GMPC, the King County Growth Management Planning Council meeting, the most recent one. I would ask that the council, please take a look, there is an Affordable Housing Task Force, a regional affordable housing task force. I just want to clarify for the public, when we talk about affordable housing, we're not talking about low-cost or low-income housing. The big point here is that one of the goals is to make sure that no one earning 80% of the area median income is cost-burdened by housing. So imagine that, that we're talking about people who make 80% of the median income. So these are not poor people. This isn't about, you know, us worrying about, you know, or being concerned that we have poor, but we're talking about people who are making a very, very decent living are unable to afford housing in this region. And so I just want to make sure that people understand that. I think it's really important to take a look at the goals that have been laid out by this task force. There's probably going to be a committee formed out of the GMPC to take this proposal forward and start to act on it and to start to get city buy-in on that. So I guess I do have a question, and that is, is that something that this council is interested in having representation on? Is that something that's worth us spending the time on to get more involved in this particular task force? It is, it was quite disturbing. If there were no more growth, we still have 140,000 units that were short. So if no one else moved to the region today, we still have to build 140,000 units in this region. So I think that these are some big numbers. You know, we talk a lot about the Growth Management Act up here, and I just want to make sure that people realize that the challenges that we're facing in this region, in a large part, have nothing to do with the Growth Management Act, and they have a lot to do with that we have a vibrant, growing region with a booming economy that I'm pretty sure most of us here, if not all of us on this council, benefit from, and that we have some real issues that we need to understand and participate in around how we're going to make sure we have housing for the people in this region already. So it's definitely worth a read, and do people think it's worth, is that a committee that I should try to get on, I guess?
Yes.
So let me ask you a question. Have they already formally created this task force, or are they just talking about...
So this task force is wrapping up. So there was already a task force. They put together the presentation that was put forth here, and it comes with recommendations. And one of those recommendations is that they pass this along to the GMPC, which would create basically a subcommittee that would go and then start to create, take these goals and recommendations and really start to make it real with the cities. So that's what the recommendation is, and that would be something that we would take up on the GMPC next year.
I think if you're... Well, that comes down to committees. Is it a committee through a subcommittee of GMPC?
It would be a subcommittee of GMPC is what their recommendation is, is that they take these recommendations from this task force and ask the GMPC to form a subcommittee and move that forward.
So it doesn't sound like they have a path slated forward. It sounds like it might be a subcommittee of the GMPC. That's the recommendation.
That's the recommendation.
But it hasn't been established yet.
It hasn't been, no, that has to be voted on still.
So maybe when it's formally established, we can come back and have that conversation?
It would probably all happen in the same meeting, though. So that's why I'd kind of like, the first meeting that would happen next year, they would take all of this up.
I think if no one else wants, from our city, is desiring to do that, then I don't take any issue with it.
I'd appreciate Pam continuing her work on this committee and the follow-on committees that come with it and continue to report back on this as needs merit.
Karen, did you have a question?
No, I was just, I mean, it's going to fall into our January, it's going to fall into our meeting.
Tuck into your microphone.
Well, the GMPC, though, is one of the SCA committees, so it's not, this wouldn't be one of the committees that we choose. I think you'd have to be a member of the GMPC to be part of the subcommittee, and that's something that I already had to submit my nomination for.
Right. I was just wondering if you were going to keep...
Yeah, oh, I...
So the recommendations have come out, but they haven't been formalized. So PIC will take them up, and then that is not the final stop. Then they go to the SCA Board for final adoption, and I think you're slated to be an alternate for GMPC.
Probably still. That's what I am today, but...
That's what, the list already came out.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, so you're an alternate for, suggested alternate for PIC and then SCA. So she would be one person from Sammish that would have representation at GMPC.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilmember Ritchie, did you have something as well?
I do. I have a brief report. I was able to meet with the Wolf Pack of Cub Scouts late last week, and they're a fun group. I recommend it. They were extremely excited about the Emerald Necklace, and when I described what that looked like, what that might mean, there was a lot of excitement about future trails and camping opportunities and being able to, you know, enjoy the green spaces around Sammish. They were a lively group of seven, eight, maybe some nine-year-old young boys and girl. I also have been appointed a member of the Chamber of, Sammish Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and I went to the meeting on Saturday where we discussed some economic growth opportunities for their city and what we can do to encourage continued economic growth in our city. There'll be some more stuff coming out of that, and I hope to be able to provide that to the council, again, as needs merit. Also, on September 14 is the East Side Transportation Partnerships, the 21 cities that make up the ETP. The legislative actions, legislative agenda will be essentially adopted, and I sent this out a couple weeks ago. But very, very briefly, the legislative priorities, the things that the ETP will be trying to focus our state legislators' attention on include fully funding the Public Works Trust Fund, a state fuel tax, a road usage charge study, which had some people's attention, accelerating funding for the I-405 Master Plan, again, very important for those of us that take that road every day, and even more so, some investments, some improvements, some significant investments focusing on 405, 202, 90, and amongst several, 167, 900, a lot of the roads, specifically 202 to our regional proximity, and what we can do to work on congestion issues on those roads. Bicycle pedestrian infrastructure policies, regional transit, technological advances, these are things that they're really focusing on as far as making sure that our state legislators, the nine that represent Sammish, will be able to hear from us and focus on. And I encourage all of us to attend the meeting on September, help me, Melanie.
December, you mean.
Sorry, December. December 11 at 4:30, where we will be meeting with one, two, three, four, five, six, maybe six, of our local state legislators here. And I look forward to all of us being here for that so that we can give them our insight as far as specifically our transportation needs. I assume there will be a transportation package, maybe Councilmember Val de Rama can speak to that, coming out of the legislative session coming up starting in January. And again, it's really important that we are there, talking to those state legislators at that meeting. And if there's any questions about the ETP legislative agenda, please feel free to email me, and I'll do my best to incorporate those individually. Thank you.
Okay. Now, Mr. City Manager, your report.
Just one item. I wanted to get a little direction from the council, make sure you're good with what I'm proposing here. Staff and I met with the attorney for the school districts to begin our discussion on school impact fees. What we decided, it'd be good to kind of get everyone together. So with your permission, I'd like to work with the mayor to pick some dates, and we will send a letter of invitation to the three school districts to see if they will come and meet with us so we can begin that discussion in January around school impact fees. I know that the mayor has been very interested in this issue, as well as the deputy mayor, so we have room for one other. If Councilor Stewart, we can add you to that, and we'll let you know what those dates are, and we'll get that letter out, unless you have any objections to that.
I have one addition. I'd like to invite the other jurisdictions to the individual school district meetings because that was originally what we had discussed. I spoke with Mary Lou Polly Isquah's mayor earlier this morning, and they had a meeting last night where they passed an ordinance last night at their council meeting so that they now can do whatever they want to with the impact fees. So I just think it would be important to pull in the other jurisdictions that touch our Lake Washington and our two big school districts, Lake Washington and Isaquah, just so that we're all at the same table, we're all having the same conversation. Because if one goes off and does something over here and the other jurisdiction does this, we're paying different impact fees, and that may cause friction down the line.
Okay, so that would be City of Isquah and...
It's a lot more than Isaquah. Isquah and Sammish are the biggest two jurisdictions, but I think you have parts of Newcastle in there. I'd have to look at an Isquah school district map to know all the jurisdictions. Unincorporated King County.
Looking at everyone that touches those three school districts.
You've got Redmond, you've got Kirkland, Sammish.
St. Louis, Missouri.
Unincorporated King County for, no, for the Lake Washington School District.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
It may be hard to coordinate all of those jurisdictions at one time, but I think putting the invitation out to them and letting them know that we're having this conversation with the school districts would be very important.
Do you want to meet with the school districts before we bring all those folks in and then have a bigger meeting, or do you want to do all that first time out of the box?
You know, it might be easier. If we have a large contingent of Sammish people there, then it's going to be, I think they'll feel ganged up on the districts, honestly, especially if you start inviting others. It might be better to have a very small group, but I think it's important to have the other jurisdictions present at the meeting.
I do agree we need to bring those folks in. I think, our thinking on the first meeting would be just to get a good understanding of how they arrive at their fees, and that might be better in a smaller meeting. And then, once you're comfortable with that understanding, then we could bring in the larger group, which is going to take kind of an interesting...
Okay. Okay, I mean, I have a pretty firm understanding of how they come to their fees, so I don't want to waste their time. I get how they come to their fees. I think the real, the crux of the issue is we don't necessarily agree with how they come to their fees, right? And that's what we really need to talk about. I know we want to probably softly tread these waters here with the school districts and the other jurisdictions, but Isquah's kind of kicked that door down already, and the Isquah school districts well aware of what's going on in Isquah. So I think next year, the impact fees are going to be a very interesting thing there.
Okay, I'll float some dates to the three of you, see if that works, see if we can get an agreement what those dates are, and then we can send an invitation out to the world and see what we...
The world. All right. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just, it would be interesting to get some more information from Isquah because, as I understand it, the impact fees have to be the same across all of the jurisdictions because if they're not, then those fees have to be targeted, and that starts to tie the hands of the school districts. So for example, if we have a different fee here in Sammish, then those fees have to be spent in Sammish, and that means we have to find land in Sammish to build those schools. Whereas in Lake, for instance, in Lake Washington, we may very well, like the opening of the middle school in Redmond Ridge will actually ease the population in Inglewood because more kids out of Evergreen are going to move to Redmond Ridge, and then more kids from Inglewood can move to Evergreen. So we do get benefits by building schools all throughout the district, and because we don't really have a lot of land to build new schools, I think we just need to be aware and we need to be careful about how we move forward there, that not having those funds have to be earmarked for a specific place actually, I think, has great benefit to the school districts.
So just for background, I don't think the idea is to try and have different fees. I think the idea is to have the same fee. I think it's the methodology that's in question with how the districts are arriving at the impact fee that they're bringing to us. That's the conversation we want to have, so that they're bringing the exact same fee to every jurisdiction that they touch.
Fair enough. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that.
Anything else on your... Okay, we do have another executive session, this one also for potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1i. What are we anticipating time-wise? 30 minutes?
And you may have action afterward.
We may have action.
We've got to wait till the screen's clear before we take that motion to adjourn. So, hold tight.
We're good?
I move we adjourn.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, by a vote of 6-0, we are adjourned.